The Berks School's Board of Education Workshop number 1535 is now called to order. Mine is all. All right, apologies. We'll fix the technological issues here. Meetings are now fully open to person as well as live streamed on the district's YouTube channel in accordance with the most recent health advisory issued by the St. Louis County Department of Public Health and City of St. Louis Department of Health. On July 2021, face coverings will be required for all in attendance, even if you are vaccinated. Board workshops are informative presentations, just so you know, between the cabinet team and the Board of Education to provide in-depth information, facilitate open discussions between us and the district's work and topics of interest. During these workshops, administrators can share information, seek input, and answer questions from the board. Are we figuring it out here? Citizen comments are not included on workshop agendas. If you wish to address the board, you will want to do that at the regular meeting, which starts at 7:00 PM this evening. You can use our electronic signup form, which is in the back of the room and will be available, or a code between 6:30 and 7:00 PM prior to that meeting. So given that, Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda for this meeting?
We do not.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Jen, second by Mike. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll go to our discussion topics. We have two discussion topics for the workshop agenda this evening. We'll begin with 4.01, which is district equity work, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Tara Sparks.
Sure. So Colin, let's go ahead and have the presentation up. Good evening, everybody on Zoom. Floyd and John, good to see you guys. Matt Alonso is also joining us via Zoom. He is working at a camp as a counselor this week, and so he is on there as well. And Kathy was on, is not available to be here tonight. So thank you all for being here. So we're going to start out with, three years ago, when we came into the district, Colin, you can go ahead and change that next slide. So here's kind of our agenda. We're going to talk about core collaborative partnership. We're going to talk about Lindbergh success skills, and then, I can't see that last part, I believe it's the opening task for school, opening task force, just Tara's going to give a quick update on that at the end of the workshop today. So, next slide, Colin. So when you look at our work, when you look at our compass plan, and you look at how we organize, what it is, the experiences we want to design for students, we always start with the why, then we talk about the how, and then we talk about the what. And so I want to take us back to the why. Three years ago, when we came into the district, it was very apparent that we needed to engage the community, find out what was important to the community. We went out, I did about 83 listening and learning tours, I believe it was, and part of that was to kind of determine, you know, what's important to us as we think about student experiences. So we asked the community, and this is not just parents, this is business leaders, this is students, this is teachers, this is, like I said, 83 of them. Anybody that would listen to me the first year, I would go and present to them. And so, we had 12, I'm going to take this off while I talk sense, might be a little bit easier. So, we had 12 success measures, and we asked the people at those presentations to rank those 12 success measures. And in there, there are very traditional types of success measures, like attendance and things like that, and I'm going to go through those with you, and then I'm going to go back to the top five success measures that our community said to us back in 2018 that was important to them. So this is about 1,700 responses, not quite that, I don't know, Beth, you may remember, 16, high 16s, but it was a, it wasn't like it was a couple hundred responses that responded to these success measures. It was a large number of responses. So, next slide, Colin. So defining success. So we asked the community to rank these 12. So the first one, very traditional way, hey, how are we doing? How's our ACT score? What does it look like? Is that important to us? Do we need to keep focusing on that? Student mastery of the four C's. So that's collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and creativity. When you think about the work world that our students are going to go out into, information is changing at such a rapid pace. So they're going to have multiple jobs, they're going to have multiple careers. So what are some skills that, here's the information we need to be teaching kids from the Missouri Learning Standards, but not just focus on the rote, can you regurgitate information back on a test, but how do I build a collaborative skill? How do I teach, you know, how do we help kids think critically and look at things through different lenses, and those kinds of things. So our community said, so that was one that we asked them. And then we said student attendance rate, you know, do we need a good student attendance rate? State reading and math scores, personalized learning for students and staff. Next slide. Student satisfaction. Do we want our kids to be happy? Do we want to gauge, hey, do our kids feel like they have value? Do they, are they happy coming to school? Parent satisfaction. Do our parents think, you know, do we, are we doing a good job? Is that important? High quality teachers in the classroom, graduation rate, entrance into post-secondary types of programs, employment for students following graduation, social emotional well-being of our students and staff. So we asked the community to rank those 12. So you had, you couldn't pick them, you couldn't say whatever, you had to put a 12 on this one, a 1 on this one. And so it was a very clear break where the top five of those really came into play. And so the top five success measures, and this is what's been driving our work, this is what our community said, and this is what drove the development of our five-year strategic plan, which we're in year three of that. We're going to get ready to start year three. So coming up, we're going to go through this exact process again when we develop our next strategic plan coming up. So, so go ahead and go to the next slide, Colin. So this is what, and this is the order in which they came to us. It was, make sure you got great teachers in the classroom. So we've looked at hiring practices, we've really created great interview instruments to really get to the heart of, do you have a passion for kids? You know, I get it, you may get physics, but do you love kids? Do you want to help kids be successful? So we've really been really intentional about our interview instruments to make sure we get the right people working with our kids in this community. And then the social emotional well-being, that was number two on the list that people said. If we don't take care of our kids and they don't feel like they belong, then they can't learn at the highest level possible. Same thing with our teachers. You know, when I came into the district, I mean, there was some animosity between teachers, administration. I think we've done a really good job the last three years of really building that collaborative relationship with our, with our teaching staff, because if we don't take care of those folks who take care of the most important thing that walks through our doors each and every day, and that's our students, then they'll never reach their potential. So making sure that they're taken care of. Mastery of the four C's, again, about these critical skills that kids are going to need to be successful in life. Not just to do school well, not just about a test score, but what is it about they need to do to be successful in life. Personalized learning, this idea of a one-size-fits-all education that you and I, everybody sitting out here got, right? It was this way and only this way. How do we go about designing an experience where, this is what, Johnny, this is what I want you to learn. You may show me that in a presentation, and Mike might show me that in a written paper, because that's Mike's strength. Why are we, you know, going to the strength of the student, you know, you can demonstrate learning in lots of different ways than just sitting there and regurgitating a bunch of information and spitting it back out on a test. So that's what, that's what's behind the personalized experience for our kids. And how, what does that look like? And then happy kids. You know what? With student satisfaction. Do our kids feel like we're meeting their needs? Do they feel like we're being successful and we're treating them with dignity and respect, and that they feel like they have a voice, and they feel like they have value? Every single one of our kids walking through our door each and every day deserves that. And that's what this work is about. And so when you think about this inclusion, diversity, and equity work, it hits at the heart of social emotional learning, of our staff and our students, as well as that student satisfaction. You could even get into the critical thinking about looking at things through different lenses, and problem solving, and different things like that. But really, it's at the heart of that. And so that's our why. That's why we're here. Okay, so this isn't something that we just randomly decided, oh my goodness, let's just do that. Okay, it has been a process of three years through community engagement. Again, back to 83 of these. The second year, I cut them down, I went ahead and did them again, and I'm going to do them again this year, as long as COVID allows me to be in person with people. I'm going to get back in person in front of people again. I think we did like 40-some the second year, and I probably will do around 30 to 35 again this year, if the environment allows me to do that, because it is important for me to hear what our patrons have to say. But again, this wasn't, this is what our community told us. This isn't, we, you know, Dr. Lake and the board sitting here, or the cabinet making these decisions in a vacuum. And that's why we created our board advisory committees when we came in three years ago, was to get students and parents and community members involved in our work. I vividly remember in my interview, I said that more people know what we're doing, the better off we all are. So we want, we want to be transparent. We want everybody to know what's going on with our work, and that's really the culture we've tried to commit to, and these success measures have been driving our work. So I really wanted to lay out the why. Why are we here today having this conversation? And it really centers around those two success measures. Okay? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sparks, because it's not only what our community said, it's also what our new school, Missouri School Improvement Plan, MSEP 6, says that we need to be working on as well.
Absolutely. When we look at what's important to the community, it really aligns with state priorities, national priorities as well. We look back to the instrument of No Child Left Behind and the emphasis on equity that has been further supported with Every Student Succeeds Act at the national level. And then at the state level, we have Missouri School Improvement Program, which is in its sixth iteration. It is, over the last couple of years, gone through multiple comment cycles, et cetera, and it is in implementation phase as of 2022. So we're in the process right now of aligning our work and making sure that we are meeting state expectations. And when you look at this particular slide, you see safe, orderly, and caring climate, our environment. And a key component of that is respect for individual differences. How do we look at our, our policies, our procedures in order to support diversity needs within our district? And I know that we've done a lot of that through our Equity Committee. Specifically, we've looked over the last couple of years at some of our policies to make sure that they are very inclusive of our special education population. We've most recently done some analysis around our attendance policies to ensure that they are not punitive in support of students' academic success without students losing opportunities to, to continue to learn and grow. Colin, if you'll move to the next slide for me, please. So you can see a couple of other bullets that are highlighted here within this slide, this idea of collaborative relationships. I think tonight, the relationship that we are, the partnership that we have with Core Collaborative is an excellent example of that. Our, our ongoing collaborations with our PTOs and our parents through things, as Dr. Lake mentioned, like our board advisories. And then also continuing to monitor our data. What does our data say in terms of how we're meeting the various needs of our students? We look at our gifted population, our free and reduced lunch students receiving services and gifted at the same rate that they are as a general population. So really being analytical and then starting to dive in and say, what do we need to do to make sure that we're meeting the, the needs of our students and getting them access to everything that they, they need in order to be successful, so that we can personalize learning for them. Next slide, please. So that gets us into the how of this work. So as we continue in our journey of supporting our students and making sure that they are connected, not just academically, but also they feel like they belong every day that they walk into our schools, we are partnering with Core Collaborative. And if you go to the next slide, it is my introduction, or it's my pleasure to introduce our, our two guests tonight, Dr. Floyd Cobb and John Crown Apple from Core Collaborative. They are partnering with us in this work as we, as we develop what's going to work for Lindbergh Schools, for our community, for our students, for our families. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to them. I know they have slides as well that they are going to guide us through. Dr. Cobb and Mr. Crown Apple, thank you for joining us.
Thank you all for having us. Thank you to everyone, Mr. President and members of the board. As was introduced, my name is Floyd Cobb, and I am here with my colleague, John Crown Apple.
Greetings, everyone from Central Maryland. Pleasure to be here with you. Thank you for having us.
So just to give you, this is a super high-level overview of our, the work that we do, and you can go on to the next slide. John and I have had a significant amount of experience in working in K-12 schools, both at central office level, classroom level, and leadership levels, and have spent a lot of time kind of looking at this idea that is traditionally referred to as educational equity. And a few years ago, we made the decision to write a book that, what we attempted to argue is just kind of spoke to some of our frustrations in terms of some of the challenges that we would see in terms of implementation, and wanted to work really hard to simplify these ideas, because when they're implemented in a, in a bad way or a poor way, they can lead to frustration and kind of resentment and a lot of anger. And we wanted to make sure that we could avoid that as much as possible. And so what we realized through our work was that these ideas really boiled down to kind of two things, right, which is really the things that everyone is seeking, which is belonging and dignity. And we define belonging as the extent to which people feel personally appreciated, accepted, treated fairly within an environment. And when people feel that they belong, they don't feel as if they're being treated or distracted by a stereotype. And we borrowed some ideas, we can go to the next slide, from Professor John A. Powell, who works out of Berkeley. We'll go to the next slide, there we go. And he has been sort of like the foremost thinker on this idea, really wanting to say that, you know, as, as human beings, we just basically have a unique desire to have more than access, but to be respected at a basic level that kind of includes the right to both go create and make demands upon society. And what, what that means is, is that when you know that you belong somewhere, you feel comfortable enough to be able to speak up, and, you know, certainly feel comfortable enough to be able to identify areas that you like, and in some cases, areas that may not make you feel so well, and feel comfortable enough to be able to work with those, to be able to make sure that we can find ways to make adjustments and corrections. Additionally to that, the next slide, we talk about kind of our broader idea in terms of this concept of dignity. And dignity is a concept that was brought to us by a woman out of Harvard University who does an incredible amount of work on conflict management, particularly in terms of thinking about it as it relates to conflict between nations in general. And one of the things that she's done through decades of research is really find out that one of the things that we all desire as human beings, more than anything else, aside from the need to belong, is certainly to be treated with dignity. And she identifies that dignity is being our inherent value and worth as human beings, and noting that everyone is born with it, and we all have this ability to recognize, or it comes with this state of peace and the recognition and value and vulnerability rather of all human things. And one thing that she notes, that I think is really important, is the fact that while we are all born with dignity, we're not necessarily all born with the ability to treat one another with it, and so sometimes we make mistakes and sometimes we err. And that happens, I think that's part of life. But one of the things that she also indicates is that dignity is different than this idea of respect, where a lot of times in life, we will kind of use these terms interchangeably. Dr. Hicks argues that respect is something that is earned, whereas dignity is something that is inherent. And so what we want to be able to do is to think about the ways in terms of the processes, the systems, the structures, and even our own measurement, as it relates to some of those ideas that were shared previously, about how we can go about treating one another with dignity. And if we go to the next slide, she has a quote that I really appreciate, which is that, you know, good people with good intentions can sometimes harm others if not conscious of dignity. And, you know, this is something that can happen in people with whom we're in committed relationships with, with people with whom we may not know or may be strangers. But while we, like I said earlier, while we're all born with dignity, we're not also always born with the ability to treat one another with it. And so that's a constant work that we're trying to engage in. And so as writers and as thinkers, what we were trying to do is say, okay, how do we make this conversation a little bit less confusing when it comes to, you know, this thing that is routinely called educational equity, that is sometimes not very well defined. And what we tried to do is do our best to try to simplify these ideas. And on this next slide, what I'm going to ask is John to kind of walk us through basically some of the ideas that we talk about within our book.
So what you see here are basically the two sides of our framework, which we refer to as the dignity framework. And drawing from Dr. Hicks and her really groundbreaking work, one of the things that made her work so interesting to us is that she was able to make the concept of dignity operational. So dignity as we know it, even as it's defined, is a noun. It's this inherent value and worth. And she said recently that she spent her career figuring out how to make that concept operational, meaning, what does it look like in action? What does it look like to honor the dignity of other people? What does it look like to honor your own dignity? And from there, she came up with 10, this list of 10 essentials that we all, you know, want from each other, and the flip side of that is we can all give to one another. Things like benefit of the doubt, things like recognition for thoughtfulness and effort, acceptance of who you are. There are 10 of these things. And so that really inspired us to dig into, you know, basically everything we could find that falls into what's called dignity and humiliation studies, and to, to figure out what, what is at the core of being able to honor the inherent value and worth of one another. So if you look on the left-hand side, the side of the framework that is more circular in nature, what you see are the components of our framework, and I'll just walk, walk us through it a little bit. On the outermost rim of that, of that framework there, you see the words listening, empathy, patience, and openness. These are what we refer to as the four dispositions. They're four qualities that we can nurture within ourselves and within our organization. So within our departments, within our teams, within our offenses, we can nurture these. And the presence of these dispositions make it so much easier to honor dignity. In fact, truly listening to someone is in and of itself a dignifying action. So a lot of the work we do is help people become better listeners, help people, you know, develop their empathy, and that type of thing. If you move your attention to the center ring, where the words, you see the words appreciated, validated, accepted, and treated fairly, this component of the framework is called the indicators of belonging. This gives us four states of being, four words to describe the experience people are having at any given time and any given environment. So these concepts, these words, help us better measure and basically gauge the extent to which people are experiencing belonging. By looking at the extent to which people feel appreciated, the extent to which people feel validated, the extent to which people feel accepted, and also treated fairly, we can do a better job of keeping our finger on the pulse of the, the state of well-being of staff, of students, of the folks in our community. And from there, that can lead us to planning for action, to basically improve, you know, the way we do things and how people are feeling. And then if you move your attention to the centermost area, not where it says dignity honored, but the words that are close to that, these are our four standards of, four standards for dignity. Building partnerships in community, repairing harm and restoring relationships, affirming our differences and our uniqueness, and presuming competence and positive intent. So these serve as the four standards by which we can look at the healthiness of behaviors and of practices by looking at the extent to which anything that we do helps to build partnerships, helps to build community. How anything we do helps to affirm our differences and our uniqueness, which not only applies to who we are and everything that each one of us brings to the table, but also what we do. Within that standard falls needs such as recognition for hard work, recognition for thoughtfulness, that type of thing. So all of these elements of that framework help us get better at honoring dignity as a practice, with the goal of getting more of this, right? Shaping a culture of dignity means that people would be feeling appreciated, validated, accepted, and treated fairly more often than not. And if you look at the right-hand side, what we're trying to help organizations get less of is what you see in that kind of sharp angular diagram that has dignity violated at the, at the center. And what you, what you see there is basically the opposite of what you see on the left. So the presence of judgment, denial, apathy, and intolerance make it routinely easy to violate dignity. We have some indicators that would be the opposite of belonging, what we might refer to as othering, the extent to which people feel dismissed, marginalized, mistreated, and otherized or degraded. And then we have the opposite of the standards for dignity, dominance, blame and shame, presuming incompetence, degrading differences. And what we've realized by working with teams over the past couple of years is that dignity violated side of the diagram has helped, especially leadership teams, identify some of the unhealthy practices and have really good conversations about how we can do better, what we can do better. We were just in a conversation earlier today where they were talking about a very specific practice for managing behavior that this particular school thought, okay, we can do a lot better of that, because by looking at that right-hand side of the diagram, they realized what we're doing by using these behavior charts is actually probably making students feel mistreated and marginalized. So what can we do that's better than that? So in general, just to simplify it, the goal of all of this is to get more of what's on the left and less of what's on the right. We can go ahead and advance the slide. So we have these belonging structures, and Floyd's going to go ahead and...
Yeah, so when we think about kind of trying to put these ideas together in action in terms of how it works in schools, really try to think about this a little bit more broadly. Obviously, when you think about belonging, immediately people will probably think about interpersonal relationships, which are really important. But there's a recent study that kind of put the ideas together in kind of three parts, which we think are very helpful in terms of understanding. One, there's certainly the interpersonal aspect of it, of do people make me feel like I belong here? The institutional element of it, which was actually just discussed previously in terms of rules and policies that, you know, we might need to review and reconsider to see what impact or effect that they might have on folks. And then the other is, is the instructional pieces of it, as to whether or not the materials that are being presented are reflective of the population with which we teach, but more importantly, are delivered and are selected in such a way that they honor the dignity of all of our students. And so taking all of those ideas together, they help to kind of create these structures and really create a clearer way for us to be able to, to think about some of the ongoing work that we have to certainly do in public education. As we go to the next slide, which will be our last part of this conversation, I'm actually going to ask John to kind of talk through kind of how this process actually works in terms of some of the support that we provide.
So what you're saying here is, is our mental model that we use. It's a, it's a theory of action, basically, and a process, a guide for our process. And it applies to basically everything we do, whether it's, you know, putting together a keynote speech or strategic planning over the course of five to seven years. And it's an iterative process. If you start at the very center and look at where it says, who are we? Through the lens of, you know, the three keys, it would be how inclusive are we? You know, how inclusive is our excellence, that type of thing. Just to orient you to this a little bit, please draw your attention to the bottom of the image where it says past, present, and future. So you see there's, there's a dynamic there of looking toward, you know, a vision of a better tomorrow, looking toward the past to learn and get better. And then you see on the left and right-hand side, this balance of awareness and action. So what we believe very strongly is that we need a logic model or a theory here to guide us that combines awareness and action in a way where those two concepts are coupled together. Matter of fact, we recommend taking action right away in the form of assessing the climate. So if you look there at the center where it says, who are we? The movement begins to the left, and it follows through this diagram all the way to the left where it says belonging. And what we're doing at that point is assessing our climate, you know, trying to figure out who among us is feeling something, is experiencing something less than belonging, less than unconditional belonging. And that really, when it comes to things like improvement science, design thinking, basically school improvement, that that's, that... that involves a whole process of problem identification. You know, what problems can we identify in our environment that we can define, that we can focus on, that are narrow, where we can build smart goals around them? And then if you look at the belonging side of the diagram to the top where it starts to turn blue, and if you follow it all the way to the right on the side that says dignity, what that entails then is addressing whatever problems we define through what we call dignifying action. We use the standards for dignity, the essentials for dignity, to address the problems that we're defining. And then if you follow the figure eight to the far right-hand side and up toward where it turns black again, then it's all about applying our strategy, returning to our metrics, specifically climate metrics, and seeing, are we in fact making our schools better and safer for more students? You know, are we improving our overall culture and climate while, you know, addressing any belonging gaps that may be present? You can go ahead and move the slide.
So I believe that concludes our portion. And I believe I'll hand it back over.
All right, thank you both very much. I appreciate you sharing that. What we're going to share now is what we do as we continue to move forward in this journey and working with Core Collaborative. So it is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Jeremy Mapp, our Director of Inclusion, Equity, and Diversity, to talk about that process.
All right, thank you. And thank you to the board and to this community for welcoming me. It's been a few, a couple of weeks into it, and it's been a great place to be. So I'm glad to be here. We'll go ahead to the next slide and just kind of talk about what Core Collaborative's partnership with us will look like. This is truly a partnership. It's work that they've done as far as the research side. And now we are going to work to figure out how we implement the action side. And so our work will work with our district, our cabinet members and our central office administrators with the book, The Belonging Through a Culture of Dignity, and establishing what our current, who we are is, as John and Floyd talked about in the opening there. It's a matter of how do we look at the things that we have in place and make sure that they reflect that culture of belonging and dignity? And so that'll be through looking at our current district goals and our outcomes and making sure that those things really fit and really create a space where we have belonging dignity, both of our students and of our staff. And then that will work into a couple of series that you'll see there. And so there's an awareness series and an action series, which include basically a total of about six days that John and Floyd will be working with these members that you see there. And so again, it's that cabinet members and the district central office staff. And then we have some building equity reps. And so they work in teachers that are in our buildings. And they work with us to make sure that we are meeting the needs and thinking about the needs of both staff and of our students. And then you'll also see there are administrators, including our activity directors, counselors, and instructional coaches, social workers, and our special school districts to have to be on this journey with us towards making sure that we are achieving true equity and true support for all of our students and inclusion of all those people in that work. And so you'll see a couple of things I want to point out there. Belonging beyond access and dignity beyond respect. Again, you know, dignity is, as Dr. Cobb talked about, is that inherent piece, and respect is that earned piece. And so we have to figure out, how do we make sure that we get to a place of treating people with dignity? Because it's, first of all, that should just happen. It should be a natural thing that we do. And then finally, our action piece there, gathering evidence of our impact. So like I talked about on that figure eight, it's going to come back to, you know, who we are now is who's already there in the center. But then the work of the action series and the awareness series will help us get back to that work in the middle where we can change who we are and make who we are truly reflective of a culture of belonging and a culture of dignity for our students and for our staff. We'll go on to the next slide. And so our work is around belonging. And belonging is an outcome. It's something that is not, something that we naturally do. It's something that you have to create. It's a culture that you have to build. You know, you think about climate and culture, that's all reflected in the leadership. It's all reflected in the things that we do and that we say are important. And it takes time to do that. It takes time to create a culture of belonging. And so through this work in partnership with Core Collaborative, we're going to work to make sure that we create a place of belonging for all of our students and a place of belonging for all of our staff. And again, that inclusion piece being our focus, I've talked about this a little bit. The idea that, you know, our work here in Lindbergh specifically has been very important, I think, even as far back as the naming of disposition. This work is generally referred to in this as a DEI work. It's diversity, equity, and inclusion. It was titled differently in this district for a very specific reason. We're about inclusion first. We're about making sure that all of our students and our staff feel like they're a part of this. And that happens through a culture of belonging. We're about making sure that our practices are equitable. And so that's where the equity piece comes in next. And we're also about making sure that we have diversity. And again, that diversity may not, even if it's not necessarily in our student population or even in our teaching population, the diversity of what it means to be a part of the greater world, the diversity of what it means to be a part of who we are in this state and this nation, and how we really interact with all the different people that we will come across to make sure that we create, again, that sense of belonging and dignity in our culture. One of the things that I didn't talk about in the last slide, but thinking about our social-emotional learning piece, that was one of the things that was highlighted as one of those top five the community is interested in. Making sure that we have a tool that can assess not only social-emotional well-being of our students, but also is there a sense of equity and inclusion in that as well? And so we'll be reviewing this year, you know, trying to figure out how do we create or find the right tool to truly assess our students and make sure that they have a sense of well-being, a sense of, again, belonging within our community here in Lindbergh, so.
So Dr. Mapp gave a great transition to the work that we've been doing over the past few years with regard to Lindbergh Life Success Skills. So we talk all the time about the fact that we are sending our students out into a world, and we need to make sure that they are college and career ready, that they are ready to apply the skills that they've learned with us in their pre-K through 12th grade experience in a world beyond us. So over the past three years, if you can go to the next slide, I'm going to go into more depth in just a minute on this. One more back, perfect, thank you. We're going to go into each of the different big ideas and outcomes in just a moment. But I wanted to kind of talk through how we got here in terms of developing these success skills. We've been having a lot of conversations within the district about really being purposeful and what are our priorities for students, both in terms of academics and social-emotional learning. And when you think about social-emotional learning, you're looking at things like are students aware of themselves? Are they socially aware? Do they have strong relationship skills? Can they manage themselves? Can they be responsible decision makers? So we started that process back in 2018, 19 in our Student Life Board Advisory. We really looked at the self, I'm sorry, the social-emotional learning strands, the competencies that are out there. And we said, what does this mean for our students? How do we develop something that really prioritizes what Lindbergh graduates will need? So that was our first iteration of Lindbergh Life. And we created it with three strands that were very specific to social-emotional learning. And then we kind of paused for a while and didn't really roll it out because we were in the process at the same time about learning about this idea of portrait of a graduate. It's a kind of a nationwide conversation about how do schools really get purposeful and intentional about the students they are graduating and the skills that they need to move on? And so we started to say, should social-emotional learning really be something that exists outside of that? And our answer was really no. We needed to really encapsulate it with those other skills that we knew that our students would need as they progressed beyond us. So we started that work and COVID hit. So we transitioned our plan a little bit and moved away from doing a separate task force so that our Teaching and Learning Board Advisory over primarily the fall of this school year really delved into creating this document, analyzing what's there. So again, as a reminder, Teaching and Learning Board Advisory had students, parents, teachers to give a representative view and provide input on what do our families, you know, need to have their children learn as they're exiting Lindbergh schools? So that in conjunction with our Lindbergh Learning Team, which is a group of teachers who have been guiding us on our standards-based practices over the last few years, we pulled this together. Our Lindbergh Learning Team started to use the document on a trial basis in the spring, give us some additional feedback if there was anything that wasn't really translating into the classroom. And so at that point, we've ended up with what we are now branding as Lindbergh Life Success Skills. These will officially be rolled out to our staff in August. But over the last couple of weeks, we've done some great work with some of our teacher leaders to build documents that will help teachers understand what does this look like at various age levels? So for instance, when we start to look at these documents, we're looking at them from the perspective of a graduating senior. But what does it look like for an early childhood student? The language that we would use would be very different, and we would need to adjust age appropriateness, obviously. So when we go to the next slide, I'm going to start taking you through the five big ideas. So critical thinking and creativity, two of our four Cs within the district is highlighted here. And you can see the outcomes, exploring new ideas. I've just highlighted and underlined some key words. Looking for solutions for personal, local, and global challenges and considering mindset. Now, when you think about what does this look like for an early childhood student? Our early childhood educators put together some language that would be appropriate for how this applies there. So students can invent activities and play schemes by using materials in new ways. So that would be explore new ideas to stimulate curiosity and innovation. Or another one, students can accept changes in different environments and understand and adapt to transitions and routines. That third one about how are you open and have a flexible mindset? So we did that with each grade span. What's appropriate for what we would want to see students achieve when they leave our preschools and get ready to enter our elementary schools as kindergartners? If you go to the next slide, Colin, you can see integrity and inclusiveness. So this is where we start to see the integration with some of the conversations we've had tonight with Core Collaborative. So looking at human dignity, integrity, empathy, respect, building and maintaining positive relationships. Our kindergarten through second grade grade span came up with students understand how they are individuals with unique qualities that are a piece of a larger community. So again, how do you transfer these to age-appropriate, grade-appropriate, and build these skills for students so that by the time they leave us as high school students, they have these skills well in hand to be successful beyond Lindbergh? Next slide, communication and collaboration. So how we listen to understand, how we work together as team members, how we communicate clearly. In our intermediate grades, which would be our third through fifth grade students, an example of that would be students can give and receive feedback when completing a project in order to enhance it. So again, applying these tools not just to their social-emotional learning, but also to their academic and communication and collaboration, again, two of our four Cs. The next slide focuses on identity and agency. And I want to pause here for a second because we had a lot of conversations about this word, agency. And it's a, we really questioned, should we even use the word? Because it's not something that people are really familiar with, but it's something that's a very powerful word that really focuses on this idea of student empowerment, student ownership. And to pair it with identity was a very purposeful choice for us because our students need to understand who they are, what are their strengths? How do we focus on strengths-based learning for our students? And then how do they use those strengths? And then conversely, their weaknesses to be able to advocate for themselves and for their needs? How do they set goals and objectives for themselves to be able to be successful? So at middle school, that's as simple as saying students can use their strengths and remain positive to improve their community. And then moving on to our final one, work ethic and effort, using feedback to improve and accomplish tasks. We talked about feedback a little earlier. Part of using feedback is how do you give feedback? So there's that skill in itself. But then there's also how do you receive feedback? And then how do you use that feedback and know when it's appropriate to enhance the work that you're doing? How are you making good decisions? You know, we talk a lot about in our world about students' digital life, for example. How do we really get purposeful about doing that? And that concept of time management and organization truly essential for our students to be successful. And our high school group worked on, came up with a specific example there with students are able to accurately predict the time required to complete tasks and manage their time effectively to balance schoolwork, extracurriculars, et cetera. So our focus has been, these are those big ideas and these outcomes that we want. But how do we transfer that work specifically into student-friendly language that's age-appropriate and helps them build those skills as they matriculate through our schools? So with that, our next part of the agenda is school opening. So I think we should take a pause and kind of reflect here.
Yeah, so we'll take, in between those two agenda items, just open it up to the board, why Floyd and John are with us and just our team, any questions that you guys might have, you know, just to clarify or anything. So I think it's that time.
Hello, Doctors Crown and Crabapple. Crown Apple, I'm sorry. I didn't mean that. This is Mike Tischloss on the treasurer of the Lindbergh School Board. I want to thank you for presenting to us today. We appreciate you taking the time. Actually, kind of going over, you know, your model for belonging through dignity. Each board member received a copy of your book. I believe we've all read it. I've read it. And I just wanted to ask you some questions regarding your approach. And I think you're probably very aware, as most people are, that there have been a lot of conversations going on in school boards around the country dealing with curriculum issues. You know, a lot of that conversation has been around, I guess, issues of, you know, identity, you know, intersectionality. I'm sure you're familiar with those terms. Well, obviously you are. And I guess what I wanted to ask was, as part of your model and your approach, you know, I understand that you incorporate, you know, a student's sense of identity to bring to discussions, I guess, you know, any issues that would, you know, help further a common sense of belonging. But I wanted to ask, do you, anywhere in your, I guess, model, use a sort of contrasting form of intersectionality where you create sort of oppositional categories? Usually, these categories are delineated in different ways. They're, you know, applied sometimes in forms of, you know, who is an oppressor versus who is an oppressed person or group? And it ends up, and I think, as you said in your book, it ends up oftentimes, when you use an approach, I suppose, like that, it ends up reinforcing stereotypes. It doesn't help further belonging as a result of that. Do you use any of that kind of methodology or pedagogy in your model?
Thank you for the question. I'll start and then, John, feel free to follow up if there's anything that I've missed. The short answer to that question is no. Part of the reason why we wrote the book Part of the reason why we wrote the book was because we found so many challenges in terms of experiences that we've seen with teachers with whom we've worked in school districts, who have walked away from basically what we would typically refer to as diversity training experiences, feeling wounded. And, you know, as someone who worked with folks on a daily basis, it was this weird dynamic to be in. Because for some people, you know, the training worked well, right? The training, people got it and it made sense to them. But for a lot of people, they just left away feeling injured. And what it, how it was received, while that may not have been the intent, was basically to try to encourage people to not stereotype by stereotyping people. And in doing that, you're just trading, you know, one shade of humiliation for another. You know, the thing that I've learned, as much as I've studied in this work, is the thing that we, none of us want to feel in a public space is to feel humiliated. Like, none of us want to feel that. And we have different versions of words that we use for what that form of humiliation can feel like when it's directed at a specific group. But at the end of the day, nobody wants that. And so when experiences get set up indicating that that has to be the end result, it makes it very difficult to be able to find a pathway and to move forward. And so part of what John and I both were seeking was to know that, you know, we can do better in schools, right? And we can improve. And there's lots of students, independent of who they are, independent of their identities, who can come to school and, you know what, sometimes, for whatever reason, may not feel like they belong. And with that in mind, we've got to be able to be clear in terms of how we can, you know, as educators, find a way to do better. And so we have worked really hard just by, you know, and we talk about this in the first chapter of our book, where the cycle begins to emerge because we're just, we're kind of going back and forth at each other. And, you know, we're starting to see some of that in terms of how it can reveal itself, you know, across our country. And what we're trying to really focus on more than anything else is to say, look, we all have the same fundamental needs. Some of us may experience humiliation or indignities at different times or in greater frequencies. We all know what it feels like. And we don't need to have everybody sit in a room and then be made to feel bad. I just, that's just not something that works and to be honest with you, is contrary to just the principles of dignity and belonging. And that's so much of why John and I were so much more attracted to thinking about moving forward this way as opposed to, you know, what we see more often and more commonly in terms of engaging in these conversations. John, if you can add anything?
I would just add, I mean, you pretty much said it all there, Floyd. I would just highlight, I guess, or amplify that the examples that you gave, Mr. Schellis, is, I would say, a textbook example of reducing people to those categories is a textbook example of violating dignity. And that's not something that we want to be a part of at all. It's an example of making people to feel something less than appreciated, something less than validated, something less than treated fairly. That's a big one. In other words, something less, feeling less than belonging. And that's something that we feel pretty strongly about because it's antithetical to what we are all about.
Well, thank you for that. I just have also one follow-up question. And this, to me, is the question that's the most challenging in an educational system where we're looking to encourage students who are still forming. I mean, I would say, you know, we talk about identity. Well, you know, they're maturing, they're actually forming who they are, they're kind of, you know, in an ongoing way, changing. But in those conversations, let's say, that are had, and we often think of this, I mean, it could even be at the elementary level, more often we think of this as being at middle and certainly high school level. You know, where you have conversations that come up, whether in a homeroom, whether in a class, dealing with, let's just say, I don't know, any, you choose a hot button issue of the day, or begin, you know, speaking in terms of who we are and, I guess, who we are and how we represent ourselves to each other. That when those conversations come up, one thing you would want to do, I would think, because, you know, to me, dignity, part of, actually, a big part of dignity to me, anyway, is freedom of conscience. If we don't have freedom of conscience, where we cannot feel free to express ourselves, you know, in terms we want to, even if those terms are not well-understood by others and might take listening and talking through to understand, if those conversations cannot occur, or if freedom of conscience is not respected, and I know you guys have, you know, paused on the word "respect," but I would say even acknowledged, that you are really violating one's dignity. And that, and here's the rub. When you, for instance, have, in a classroom setting, where conversations come up between students of different backgrounds, and, I mean, you might be familiar to some extent with Lindbergh, having done some background information or what the district might have provided you. For instance, you know, we have, you know, a substantial number of ELL students, you know, immigrants or children of immigrants who come from all parts of the world, from different cultures, with, you know, different expressions of, I mean, whether it's a faith or cultural expression. And when those conversations occur in a classroom, you may find, well, I think it's very likely you will, that, you know, there's going to be disagreement. And, you know, we don't want to violate dignity by violating one's freedom of conscience, I would think. So how do we go about, and I guess this is how I would word it, how would we go about agreeing to disagree in a constructive way? If you can answer that, you've helped solve many of the world's problems right now. But it really is an important issue. When there are differences of viewpoints and who values what, or what their values are, I should say, and those values are not always reconcilable, where do you go in the conversation?
Sure. So the first thing that I wanted to note is that the work that we attempt to do is more with the adults than it is with the children. And so I don't want it for anyone to have any confusion with that in terms of the things that we're trying to do is provide support to the educators, to the leaders, in terms of thinking about climate as a general idea and a general concept, to better be able to support students and actually to get to the very thing that you're talking about. In answering your question, you know, I think that you've hit something that I've spent a lot of time thinking about. And I feel like we've, as a nation, kind of started to get pretty far askew when it comes to that. I think that there's an opportunity to, you know, respectfully disagree, you know, particularly in terms of matters of policy, right? Like, we live in a democracy, right? The very nature and the very structure of school boards is democratic. The purpose, right, is to be able to bring people together who may have differing views on particular issues, to try to come up with the best particular solution for the community as a whole, representing a component or portion of one group's thinking and a component or potion, portion rather, of another group's thinking. Where I think this conversation at times goes askew is where the disagreement on a particular policy matter kind of moves into this realm, as I mentioned before, of humiliation and/or finger pointing. And I think what can happen is, is when it gets into that realm, we then kind of react in a, you know, protective manner. Because, you know, in all of our studies, we've learned that humiliation is the most powerful emotion that human beings feel. It's the thing that we fear the most. And so when we're disagreeing, right, on a matter of, and you named the issue, right, you named the topic, I think that there's, whatever, we'll just use something that seems benign in my mind, right, of start times, or if we can use the, you know, conversation right now happening nationally in schools as it relates to masks, right? I think those are really important debates to be able to have. It's, I think, people get to a point where it's much tougher to listen when they feel like they are being attacked personally or being attacked in such a way that it is attempting to diminish them altogether or to humiliate them in the sort of public square, if you would. And I think that if we can, you know, take a deep breath and learn to say, you know, well, maybe we won't agree on all of these pieces, but maybe we can agree on this piece. I think that that is just a much more productive way of thinking about where we can move forward because, in truth, even when we think about sort of all of the conversations that we're seeing happening in school boards, there are pieces where I think that most folks would agree. And I think that there's an opportunity to be able to start there as opposed to always immediately and reflexively going back into our corners and setting up shop and, you know, holding camp and, because we never have a chance to move forward. And this is our country. This is what we got. We got each other. And we've got to be able to find an opportunity or a way to move forward together.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Megan Vetter, on the board here. I just wanted to kind of ask slash just ask you to speak a little bit more about going further with that idea. If we're looking at our district and our kind of core with our four Cs and our collaboration, looking through this book and then talking to my colleagues and everyone else, we're looking at this idea of the fact that we're all coming to this space and we can't deny that we all come with differences. And you spoke about different types of identities and different types of diversity. And so I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit more about the fact, or maybe just support the idea, if I'm understanding it correctly, that we are all coming into this with a lot of curiosity as individuals and that we want to build on that curiosity in a respectful way. So how can we, as a district, as adults, lean into that curiosity and be respectfully curious in this work and collaborating with each other, which will then essentially trickle down to what is the most important part, is finding this work within our students and our community? So I was wondering if you could speak a little bit to that?
Sure, I can start off with this one. And Floyd, feel free to come in with anything I've missed. I think at the heart of your question is something that is a point that we try to stress when we're working with groups, which is, this work is relational. And what often is missed when people say that is that relationships are extraordinarily hard. Relationships, you know, saying something like, well, all we need to do is focus on relationships is like saying, well, all we need to do is send humans to Mars. It's really, really hard. It's really hard to have and maintain positive relationships with the people we live with, you know, much less the people we work with or the students we serve, et cetera. So, you know, that point was really reinforced, which was part of what we loved about the work of Donna Hicks around dignity, is that she discovered through her work with conflict resolution around the world, whether it, you know, was in Northern Ireland or, you know, with corporations or individuals, that all conflict emerges from violations of dignity. You know, whether those are violations that everyone can see or whether they're perceived violations of dignity. So the hard work is learning, well, I believe, part of the hard work in learning how to honor dignity more and violate it less, is acknowledging that each of us has the capacity to harm one another. And it's really easy to do. You know, my wife right now is taking care of the kids. They're setting up dinner outside and everything. And I know, it's been a long day. I know, once these kids get to bed, you know, we're going to, she's going to want to talk about the day. I can harm her really easily by not paying attention to her when she needs me to pay attention. It's like super easy to do. So acknowledging that each of us has within us, like Floyd said earlier, the capacity to harm one another, and also, we are easily harmed. You know, there's this healing component when we mess up, right? When we harm one another, that seems extraordinarily hard, hard to do. It's hard for people to admit that they messed up because it shows weakness, right? So here we are, 2021, and it's hard for people to apologize. So, you know, this type of work, being relational, at its core, when it comes to healing and moving on and finding a way forward, involves two essentials of dignity, which is acknowledgement, which was said earlier, and accountability. Acknowledging the harm that was done, acknowledging people being made to feel like they don't matter, acknowledging, you know, concerns that the public might have. And then accountability, right? That we are holding ourselves accountable to what we say we are all about. And so, for instance, when it comes to this work, when we're talking about belonging, we're talking about everybody. Someone, no matter who they are, who's a part of our community, is feeling like they don't belong, then that's a problem. If someone is feeling humiliated, that's a problem. You know, we're going to do everything with our power, within our power, make sure that doesn't happen. So just, all in all, you know, it seems so simple, right? It seems so simple to say things like, well, what we're trying to do is honor dignity. And what we've discovered that, you know, it's really hard work. For instance, it's really hard for people to learn to validate one another. So what we help, this is a really specific example, because in one of our workshops, we do very specific work with helping people understand and actually practice validating one another. And one of the points that we make is you don't need to agree with someone to validate them. You don't need to, and it becomes actually that much more important when you don't. But it's extraordinarily hard. And so that really captures the essence of our work. Floyd, did I neglect anything important there?
Well, I don't think I have anything to add to that.
Well, thank you both so much. Appreciate you being here.
So we did have one of our board members, Kristi Watts, couldn't be here for the part of the workshop, but she's on the Zoom. She had put a question in the chat about just some of the other school districts that you have worked with. I know you've worked with, I believe it's Francis Howell, some work there. And so if you wouldn't mind sharing that, that'd be great.
Sure, I can start off with this one, too. We've been working with Francis Howell for a couple of years now. I think pre-pandemic, we would have been going into year three of implementation. And particularly, two of the high schools, we actually highlight with groups that we're talking with across the nation. And they are doing some extraordinary work around culture and climate. Matter of fact, if you walk into Francis Howell North right now, you'll see, the first thing you'll see is this big sign that says, "You Belong Here." Everywhere throughout the school, you'll see basically what I would think of as cultural artifacts of them defining what it means to be a Viking, what it means to be a part of that community. It means, let's see, the sign that's in every room is Francis Howell North, where the roots of dignity grow the fruits of belonging. And they're very clear with defining that. And the students, you know, the students have been involved, they speak the language, all of that. One of, I think, the most impressive stories coming out of that school is how they've engaged in the continuous improvement process by, I think, it would be two years ago now that they administered their first campus-wide belonging inventory. And it's this scale, it's not our scale, it's been around for a couple of decades. It's called the Psychological Sense of School Membership Scale. They administered it to everyone, you know, everyone in the community. They disaggregated their data. They identified groups that were expressing that they were feeling something less than belonging, and they narrowed it down to a very specific problem. They conducted empathy interviews and they realized the unmet need that they were going to address was, had to do with acceptance. And so then their strategy became issuing invitations, which is one of Donna Hicks's 10 Essentials of Dignity. And it wasn't issuing invitations to a specific group. It wasn't just issuing invitations into extracurricular exercises. It was issuing invitations all around, inviting people in to your lunch table, right? And breaking down cliques in the staff room, you know, inviting new members into your group when you're in the classroom, you know, into your group work. And it became the motto and the theme. And then, right around the time the pandemic hit, they were going into their second iteration there of measuring. But that's basically how it works, is, you know, you take a pulse on the climate, you identify a very specific problem that's related to a lack of belonging, and you use that unmet need to then focus in on your improvement, so you're improving the culture and climate for everyone. So that's one of the success stories we like to highlight there. It really illustrates a lot of the principles that we're trying to help people understand. It really illustrates a lot of the principles that we're trying to help people understand.
Any other questions from the board or cabinet or anyone?
I did just briefly, Mike Chaimer here, another member of the board, wanna thank you for the work that you've done with the cabinet administration, sort of getting us to the point where, you know, we see where this adds value and is constructive when it becomes to belonging and inclusion. And my question was just at a high level, how does this work here intersect with a student's opportunity to receive that quality education and sort of allow for future success? If you could just briefly address that.
Go ahead, John. Yeah, so if I understand the question correctly, let me just make sure that how does, how does our work intersect with setting students up for success in, in life outside of school?
Absolutely correct, yes.
Oh, sure. Yeah, you know, it's really interesting when you dig into the research on belonging. You know, it's an expansive body of work that transcends schools, you know, in, in the corporate world. And Gallup actually does a lot of it related to workplace. And what you'll see are the common threads that when, when belonging is high, when people feel like they belong, they're more engaged. And when they're more engaged, they perform better, whether it's at their job or whether it's in the classroom. And the opposite is true. And there's so much research on this over the past 30 years that when people are receiving messages that they, they, they might not belong there, that they're more of a guest than at home, there's a significant negative impact, significant underperformance in the classroom. But there's also a slew of just negative health outcomes. Matter of fact, there's this meta-analysis that we cited in the book that shows that a lack of belonging, social exclusion, and loneliness are equivalent to smoking 15 cigarettes a day in terms of the negative health impact, you know, over time. So what we're talking about in terms of ensuring belonging is very much a health and well-being issue as much as it is anything else. So, you know, that's one piece, is we're talking about real-life health here, not just, you know, preparing for the future. We're talking about actually extending people's lives. The other part is that the work ends up having what is called in the research democratic outcomes. It actually ends up supporting the type of community that, that we all say we want. Like Floyd said, this is what we got here. And the work around belonging and inclusion ends up building the, the outcomes and the skills that the experts say are absolutely foundational to a functioning democracy. Floyd?
And then what I would say is, you know, we talk about this in the book, that so many of the challenges that we look at in education really are the effects of a lack of belonging. We have a graphic, an entire chapter that talks about this, this distinction. We spent a lot of time in public education, talking about achievement gaps. And what we continue to find over and over again is that there are so many reasons why belonging can, a lack, rather, of a lack of belonging can, can lead to negative performance of students in general. And so, again, thinking about something more on the, the front end to be able to, to make sure that, that we're really kind of working on the, the leading indicator as opposed to the lagging indicator in this conversation. And the leading indicator that continues to be this, this general idea of belonging is John's.
Hi, this is Jennifer Miller. I have a question as well. At the beginning of most of the chapters in the book, and even within some of the chapters, you have some exercises and activities for the reader to complete. Are these types, are these examples of things that would take place in like the trainings or the workshops?
Some of them may actually have the book right here. I'm just flipping, flipping through. When we put those in the book, it was more of a, you know, for, designed for people who are backpacking on their own, so to say, you know, taking the book and learning on their own, just to provide some opportunity for people, for people to reflect. Were there questions in particular that you had in mind?
No, no, there weren't. I was just trying to see some examples of what activities would be taking place in some of our workshops.
Well, I'll tell you this, there, there's an exercise in chapter six that has, well, chapter five, too, where we have people reflect on times when they've experienced something less, you know, something less than validation, something less than acceptance, et cetera. And that's a really important part of our, our process. And actually, that's probably the thing I would highlight above everything else, is that we want everyone to recognize that this is a very human issue that, that we're dealing with. This is not, you know, specific to one group, and it certainly doesn't pit one, any one group against another group, as was asked earlier today. So we have people reflect, and then we have them share stories about when they've experienced, you know, acceptance versus marginalization or rejection, when they felt validated versus dismissed. And what, the reason why we do that is because everyone knows what it feels like to have their dignity violated. Everyone knows what it feels like to experience something less than belonging. Everyone knows what it feels like to, to belong. And so we want everyone to coalesce around those terms and to see what we're, what we're dealing with here actually applies to all of us. And that's very important to our process because what we believe is if everyone can see themselves as a, a part of the, the overall problem, then everyone can see themselves as a part of the overall solution. And that's a very different dynamic than some of the ineffective stuff and approaches that we were talking about earlier, where people end up walking away from it feeling blamed, like they are the problem. And that is something that we, we try to take head-on with helping people see how all of this applies to not only the life that they've had, but the life that they're experiencing, and, and most of all, the life that they want to create.
Thank you.
Well, John, Floyd, thanks for joining us tonight, and we appreciate your partnership to help us, you know, move forward our success measures, especially those social-emotional success measures that we have, and that student satisfaction success measure that our community had identified, you know, for us three years ago. So we appreciate you guys being with us tonight, and we look forward to, to our work over the next year. So you guys have a good night, and thanks for being here.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you for having us.
Yes. Okay, I think we're, we can get off Zoom, I think. Oh, no, yeah, we can get off Zoom, I think. Yep. Yes, off Zoom? All right. And I don't think he can stay for this part. He only had 45 minutes, so. She's not, she's left. Well, I don't know if she's still on there.
I'm still here. You can't leave me, I'm here.
Okay. All right, we'll stay on Zoom.
Sorry.
All right.
All right, well, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Sparks, for leading that discussion. Now we'll move to the school opening task force discussion.
All right. Well, Kristi, we're glad you're still here. Colin, if you can go to the next slide. I wanted to take this time to go through with you, the work that we've done with the, I almost said reopening task force. We've had to reframe our thinking, our opening school task force, looking at what the 21-22 school year looks like. We had our first meeting on June 23rd, and we have another scheduled meeting for next Monday. What you see here on this agenda is not our agenda for tonight, but it was the agenda from that meeting on the 23rd. So we started with Dr. Charney giving us an update on where we are within the medical community. It's great to have her as, as a resource, as a district parent and an expert in infectious diseases and the work with the St. Louis Pandemic Task Force. And really, she reiterated a lot of what has been an ongoing conversation for us, and that we've seen practically implemented within Lindbergh, that when you have strong mitigating measures in effect, the spread of COVID-19 in schools is really very minimized, that most of the spread is happening outside of the school environment as opposed to in the school environment. And since we experienced having students in school from the first day last year, we, we have that data that we can, we can share with you tonight. So in just a minute, Dr. McKinnon's gonna share that data, and then we'll kind of go through some of the other components of this agenda with you as we talk through where we are right now and what our conversations are as we move towards our next meeting. Next slide, please.
Okay, thank you. The first thing I would point out is that when you see data like this through the entirety of the school year, again, we began school at the beginning, particularly with our elementary students. We started ECE on July 1st, so very early on during the COVID experience, Lindbergh was in person in school with students. And when you look at these numbers, it should be noted that quarantine was an extremely effective mitigation to control the spread of, of COVID-19. In a slide I'll show in just a moment, we had simply a handful of cases in which COVID-19 was transmitted within our schools. Our schools were, in fact, one of the safest places. Looking back, we can look back at this as a success, the phased-in opening. Our schools here at Lindbergh were, were some of the safest places in our community to be because of our mitigation strategies, masks, social distancing, scheduling, and use of quarantine. So, so when you have, see cases like on this slide, 467 cases of COVID-19 among our students out of a population of 7,200, except for, as I'll show in just a moment, a handful of those, those cases occurred and were transmitted outside of the school and then brought into the school. And that's why you see the large number of quarantines, because that was our mitigation to make sure we didn't transmit COVID-19 within our schools. If you could move to the next slide, please, Colin. Here are the numbers as far as confirmed cases of student-to-student transmission, staff-to-staff transmission, and staff-to-student or student-to-staff transmission, very small numbers, single digits. These, again, were, were based on our contact tracing in consultation with the Health Department.
Yes, sir. Dr. Tischels.
All of, all grade levels. All grade.
Mm-hmm. K through, pre-K through 12. These are, these are instances that we confirmed when a student transferred to another student while at school. Student-to-student transmission may have happened outside the school, matter of fact, it did, but these were confirmed to happen within the school.
Those numbers cross elementary level one.
You're welcome. Thank you for the question. The next slide. Colin, if you could go to the next one. These are classroom quarantines, and you can see we've got one time, two times, three times. There were times when we, we had to quarantine a classroom, that means close the entire classroom, more than one time. And this did occur at several of our schools. However, again, the quarantine mitigation strategy kept us from ever having, having to close an entire building. Through the entire school year, we did not get to a point where we felt like we needed to close Concord Elementary or Lindbergh High School. So again, this is a success story, and you can see some cumulative numbers there. Colin, if you'll go to the next slide. Elementary is really more of our focus when we look at classrooms that were quarantined, entire classrooms. Middle school and high school, you don't necessarily quarantine an entire classroom because students are together for a short time, and then they move and they remix. Elementary classrooms, students are together all day in one setting. So there were times that we did have to close entire classrooms, and you can see the, the number of classes in each building that had to be quarantined at least once. But again, a very effective strategy to make sure that we didn't get spread to the point we had to close an entire building. Next slide, please, Colin. Our staff also experienced quarantine, again, a mitigation strategy. And you can see, we, we had over, almost 60% of our staff experienced some kind of quarantine. Certainly doesn't mean this many of our staff contracted COVID, but it does show you the extent that we went to make sure that we put people at home if, if there was any exposure. Next slide, please. Vaccine data. Right now, you can see the percentage of our staff, this is our staff that works directly with, with students. And this is a, a percentage that I can tell you almost certainly is under-reported. So this is a low number. Once we get our staff back here, we'll do some surveying and working with staff to understand this number and confirm this. But you can see teachers and TA staff, we're right at the 80% mark. And again, we feel like that that's a conservative number. That's the people that have chosen voluntarily to report to us, or they've been vaccinated here in our own clinics. So again, this is a very great percentage, but we feel it's even low compared to the people that are actually vaccinated. And we'll, we'll be able to continue to update these numbers for the task force. Next slide, please. And then finally, we have data on the number of students reporting to us that they are vaccinated. Again, eligible students are ages 12 to 18. We have 3,404 12 to 18-year-olds in our system currently. 1,192, as of yesterday, have reported, the families have reported to us that they are, in fact, vaccinated, which is 35%. We think this also, this number represents a conservative, low number. We feel like that we'll, we will have more families report into us about their vaccinated status, and with this number will continue to rise. Beth Johnson's worked with, with us to reach out to families and encourage them to let us know if your children have been vaccinated, because the more data we have, the better decisions we can make regarding the start of our next school year. And those are all my slides. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the data before I turn it back over to Dr. Sparks. If not, thank you.
So another piece of data that we're looking at, and keep in mind that all of the decisions that we'll make through the task force are a accumulation of multiple data points. So we have our quarantine data, obviously, from last year, as well as our vaccination data that we're aware of right now. And then in mid-June, we sent out a survey to take really a pulse from our community in terms of how they felt with regard to masking and quarantining, et cetera. So that's another piece of information that the task force will take into consideration as, as we're continuing to have conversations. So we had almost 1,700 parents respond to the survey, almost 400 staff, and then close to 500 students. 500 students were just middle and high school students. We did not survey our elementary students. If you go on to the next slide, you can see that there is, in general, a preference for masks to be optional. That preference increases when you get to the higher age levels where vaccines are already available. So this, again, is just a piece of information. I'd be interested to know, and I know we're continuing to collect feedback from, from the community with regard to more open-ended responses, and we continue to look at that. Knowing that this survey happened in mid-June, and there's been a lot of, as we know with COVID, everything is always, at this moment in time, here's what we know, and here's what, the information that we have. And since the point of this survey, we're hearing significantly more about the Delta variant, we're hearing much more about hospitalization rates within the state specifically. So those are all things that we take into consideration as we, as the, the work of the task force continues. Moving on to the next slide, you can see, and, and we've broken this out to look at the data from preschool through sixth grade, and then seventh through 12th grade. And that's because that's that point in time where we can break who's, who is eligible for the vaccine and who is not eligible for the vaccine. So we asked the question about vaccination plans. And so what you see here, and what we shared with the task force, is a summary of the percentage of, of families who do plan to vaccinate their younger children. I put an asterisk next to middle school because middle school will both include students who are in seventh and eighth grade and who are 12 years old and currently eligible, as well as our sixth graders. So that, that data may not be as accurate for sixth grade, it encapsulates middle school overall. And then in the next slide, you see the staff feedback with regard to, again, we see that, that slight preference for optional masks that is happening at each of the various levels. And then you can see district-wide as, as well. And then I also broke out the teacher data. I wanted to look specifically at what is the data for our classroom teachers who will be spending that time specifically in the classroom with, with our students. And there's not, there's not a significant variation there from what the, the total data shows us. Moving on to the next slide, our student feedback. Our students definitely have some thoughts about those masks. So you can see here, we see probably our highest level of preference for optional masks in our student population. Next slide for me, please. The reason why this is so important, that we have the conversations about masks, and it's part of us making decisions about whether, where masks are it's part of us making decisions about whether, where masks are going to be required or not required, what will be optional, is there is still going to be a significant requirement for us to quarantine students when they are direct contacts. And our priority throughout all of this has been, how do we have strong learning experiences for students to the best that we can? We know last year was, was definitely anomaly, but as we go into this year, we are trying to capture every, every high-quality learning experience that we can for students. And when students are quarantined, they are not at school. They are not able to learn with their peers, they're not able to have that direct contact with hands-on learning, with their teachers, et cetera. And last year, we were able to do what we called concurrent teaching at times, where students were able to be live in the classroom, or to be home and be live interacting with the classroom. That really reduces the efficacy of learning for both environments. That is not our plan for quarantine instruction this year. Going into this year, students who are quarantined will have asynchronous work. So at the elementary level, those will be personalized learning menus for students. At the secondary level, we have Canvas, which will have the outline of all the work students need. So our goal is to keep our kids in school so that they have access to rich learning experiences as opposed to kind of this self-managed process of learning. Next slide, please. As I shared with you earlier, it's important for us to have the conversations about what does it look like for preschool through sixth grade, and how those decisions may look different for our seventh through 12th graders because of access to, to vaccine eligibility. So in, in going through this process, and you can go ahead and go to the next slide, Colin, we are, we've delved into subcommittees as a part of the task force, and the subcommittees have been meeting, I know at least one of them met yesterday, we've got another one meeting tomorrow, to really talk about what does it look like for elementary age plus sixth grade, early childhood, what does it look like seventh through 12th grade? The operations of the district, looking at things like food service, et cetera, that's another subcommittee. Communications, what are our communications with our families? And then as I shared, we are scheduled to meet next Monday. It is possible we may need an additional meeting. That's a surprise for anybody who's on the task force who hasn't, who's listening to us right now. And then we want to, you know, it's this fine line of being able to communicate with families as soon as we can, but also giving, giving families as accurate of information about what the school year will really look like. So late July, early August is when we will communicate with families what those next steps are for, what the process for opening school is. So that's the trajectory of what happened in our last meeting. If we go to the next slide, we ended our task force meeting knowing that CDC was going to be updating guidelines, and those have since come out. And like us, the CDC values in-person learning and knows that that needs to be a priority. The, the priority around, around, you know, having eligible students have access to the vaccine, definitely something so that we can, again, keep kids in school. And then the conversations about masks. So the updated guidance from CDC is that they are recommending that students, children age two and above, who are, and those who are not fully vaccinated, remained masked when indoors. Outdoors is a, is a different, is a different expectation, that students can be maskless. So that's extremely different than what we had going into last school year, and needs to be a part of the conversation that the task force has not yet had. And then on the next slide, one of the, I'll talk about distancing and mitigation first, and then touch base on quarantine, which I think, again, is one of the biggest parts of the conversation that we need to have. Physical distancing is still encouraged, but we are looking at three feet, not six feet. Again, that goes back to what the data has been over the course of this last year in looking at transmission in schools. Mitigation measures, still, there's a requirement for masks on transportation, but food service can, can change and adjust, and does not have to have single-serve, et cetera. So there are some changes there that kind of ease some of the procedures that we had in place last school year. Quarantine, once again, for those who are not fully vaccinated, they will need to quarantine. So fully vaccinated students will not be required to quarantine, and this next statement is really important. Students, really people, but we're talking about students here, when not, not vaccinated, if those in close contact with one another, direct contact, who would be eligible for or required to quarantine, if, if they were wearing masks appropriately, quarantine is not required. So that is very different than last year, when we had masks in place and yet still students were needing to quarantine. With masks in place, quarantine will not be the outcome for our students. So these are, this is new information, these last two slides, that need to be a part of the conversation of our task force, but it's definitely, again, when you look at the totality of information that we have, it is a piece of the information in our decision-making processes. Jen, did you have a question?
I do have a question about asynchronous work if a child is quarantined. How does that work? I mean, the biggest thing I hear is, the reason why, you know, being at home didn't work for students was because they weren't doing the work. They weren't logging in, and they weren't completing the work. So what is the district's plan for students who are going to be quarantined and may potentially just miss out two weeks of school?
Well, and our goal, what we hope is that we can avoid quarantine. I mean, ultimately, that is our number one priority, is keeping kids in school, because it's not a successful option for kids. Having said that, you know, we'll continue to reach out. As a teacher, I would, those kids are my kids. Like, I want them to be successful. I'm going to be following up, checking in, having the opportunity, calling, calling parents, the same way you would do if your students were in person and they, you were not seeing that level of success, you'd want to be in communication to follow up with that.
And I would just say too, it's 10 days, not 14. So, so if you hit it bad, yeah, it could be two full weeks of learning, but typically it's maybe, you know, five, you could potentially even have five, six days, so, but that's it. You know, the, this idea of the concurrent teaching with, with staff, you know, it's kind of like, when you try to do too many things, you're not really good at any one thing. So having kids sitting at home and kids sitting in your classroom, our secondary teachers. Now, we developed our elementary where that didn't have to happen, and we've made that option for our elementary families, again, with our elementary ARC. And I think we have two, two classes, I think, of elementary ARC. So, you know, we'll, we'll do our best and to make, I mean, just like if a kid was going to miss, you know, five days because they were just normally sick, we'll continue to do those things. The nice thing about Canvas is its secondary level, which we didn't used to have when kids would miss school, everything is right there. Videos can be embedded, lectures can be embedded, so, I mean, the experience of being away from school now, learning regardless, is much better than when all of us were going to school and missing school, so. Is that the last slide?
The last slide is the last.
All right. So questions about that? So, yeah, that's all right. So questions, so we are, like Tara said, going to meet again, and we'll continue to gather data. I have a meeting with all of the area superintendents tomorrow, so we'll get a feel for what's kind of going on around the county and what the thought process is. We, you know, historically, our health department has always followed the CDC recommendations, which then in turn, we have followed. So that's kind of, you know, just some thoughts, but we haven't made any decisions yet. We're still gathering, I want to hear some conversations with some other people, kind of what they're going to do as far as processes. And that's, to be honest with you, that's what our, this group is, our superintendents have done through the whole pandemic. I mean, we have been there, you know, partnering and collaborating with one another, and making sure we were making good decisions for the St. Louis region together, and so we'll, we'll continue to, to do that. So, but like Tara said, we may need another meeting besides the, the 19th meeting, and then obviously with the board, we'll, before anything goes out, you guys will have that information, and we'll go from there, so. Thanks.
Kristi has put a question in the chat. She asked if we will still have students in pods, the three feet, et cetera. And, you know, Kristi, all of those decisions haven't been finalized yet, but we are trying, again, going, that idea of going back to normal as much as we can, and having that flexible, the flexibility to group our students, that is something that we are, we are prioritizing and is a part of the conversation. I think that these new guidelines give us a lot more flexibility to be able to manage the instructional in a more typical way.
Yeah, and Tara makes a good point, you know, as much as I think we all would want to be just back to normal, it's, it's not going to happen, but we're going to be more normal than we were all of last year. So, and like letting volunteers, you know, most likely volunteers are going to be, parents are going to be able to be back in buildings with certain, you know, procedure, you know, so we're, we're getting that normalcy back. I know for some, it's not as fast as they would like, but, you know, we have to think of the greater good and the larger picture of every, everyone, and take those into consideration for safety, you know, first, listening to our medical experts, so.
Any other questions? Okay. Yeah, thank you, Dr. Sparks, for the presentation, and, you know, obviously, the situation is fluid, and this administration does a great job of being transparent and trying to get information out there as best and as quickly as possible, so stay tuned. And I'd like to also thank everyone for joining us, whether here in person, or virtually, or livestream, or whatever we call it. So thank you all for joining us in here and gathering this information. We, we love to see people come in and get informed and see what's going on, and this cabinet administration shares any and all information they have as quickly as possible with the community, so we appreciate that. Given that, we'll move to 5.0, which is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn Board Workshop number 1535? Motion by Megan, second?
Second.
Second by Jen. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. So Board Workshop 1535 is adjourned.